This is a special meeting, March 9th, 2023, the Pike County Fiscal Court. We've got several important items. I'm going to try to get through this as soon as possible. At this time, I would like to ask Nee Jackson if he would come up and say the invocation. And Nee, if you'll just stay up here, I'll let you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the roll call.
Shall we bow for prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, Lord, we just come to you now, Lord, just first of all, thanking you so much for this another day of life that you've given us. But we're so thankful for this time of the season, dear Lord, that we are about to celebrate the resurrection of your son, Jesus. And Lord, we just ask that you watch over each and every one of us, dear Lord, that bless the people of this court, bless the people of this county, dear Lord, that everything that's said and done, dear Lord, will be done in a way that will be pleasing unto you. Lord, we just ask that you watch over everyone in our county, dear Lord. Give everyone safe travels in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. Ms. Jackson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the February 21st meeting at the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion seen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones. Yes. And the next item is, or actually, the first item is a discussion of improvements at the John R. Phillips Park at Hardy. And we have Ms. Krista McCoy, his granddaughter here, John R.'s granddaughter. And Mary, you wanting to come up also? And we have Billy McCoy. Come on up, folks, and just have a seat up here. Make sure the microphone's on, and then you'll have the floor.
Hi, how are you all this evening?
Good. Welcome.
I just wanted to touch base with you a little bit. We were working on some things last year, and we wanted to touch base on finishing the shed and painting the shed over there. And we wanted to know who we contact now that we have a new commissioner. And for schedule events, we were having movies in the park, and we don't have a movie theater now over there, so we were having, like, once a month, we were having movies in the park. We were having a huge turnout. We were having parties. We wanted to know about opening the pool, if that was going to happen. We were talking about the putt-putt golf, because it's in such bad shape. The gazebo's in such bad shape. It really needs to come be torn down.
So let me just hop in here. You know, I'm going to get on my soapbox just a little bit.
I know.
At years back, when the county had unlimited coal severance tax, prior administrations built parks, playgrounds, all over the county. And as coal productions declined and coal severance tax money went down, the court got in a position, and prior administrations, where there's no money to even maintain these parks. We came in, the first year we were in, I think we opened Hardy and Phillips both back, and then, of course, COVID hit. And I know last year, we opened Phillips, but I don't think Hardy got opened back.
Oh.
So with the court, I would make a motion. I'm one member of four. I know your commissioner's Commissioner Blackburn here in the black shirt, and I'm sure he'll be happy to talk to you about it. I would be willing to do what we've done in past years. If we could find someone that is willing to operate the pool and the concessions as an independent contractor. The court would pay the power, the water, the utilities, the chemicals for the pool, and allow someone to come in and run it. The problem is, we simply do not have the manpower to operate the pools as in years past because of, it's just, it's a revenue issue. Commissioner, Public Works Supervisor Paul Williams. Paul, how many employees do you have right now? So we got seven employees besides Mr. Williamson in the Public Works Department. At one time, they had over 40. And we've got two of those off. We just don't have enough people to maintain these facilities. We're using jail staff to try to do the best we can. I am not happy, because your grandfather was a very dear friend of mine, and I'm not happy
I know that.
with the condition of the park.
I know.
I'm not happy with the condition of Phillips and a lot of our other parks. Mr. Fannin's working on a plan to redo the park at Freiburg. I'll give you an example. You know, I always thought parks had grass and areas for kids to play. Well, they just went over there and poured a bunch of asphalt out. It's the only park I've ever seen where the basketball goals sit at 90 degrees to each other instead of one on one end and one on the other. It's going to be redone. And right now, we have a county enough, good enough financial position that we can make some investments at Hardy Park as well. I would love to see the picnic shelter painted. It needs to be sandblasted to get all that old paint off of it.
I thought they started that last year.
They started it, but I'm not sure, Paul, that it ever got finished, did we?
No.
So we need to get all the old paint off. And then underneath, you know, there's some of the wood that's rotted that needs to be changed out. It needs to be upgraded, because, you know, the park has so much potential. But, you know, the last time I was over there for a meeting, there was a lot of people just throwing garbage out, you know?
But I was going up on Saturdays and picking garbage up, taking my granddaughter with, picking up trash. But I don't know if you're aware, but the Little Leagues and the Belfry softball are already using the facilities. Belfry tennis uses the tennis courts. You know, Belfry has a swim team. They have about 18 kids, and they're traveling either to the YMCA or to Chapmanville. I mean...
I've talked to Mindy Thompson about, so if we can find somebody that's willing, and I've talked to Mindy about this, if there's a way we could get somebody to come in...
But I mean, we have a group. I mean, I'd even propose that if, like, the county would buy, like, the paint, we'd even paint the dugouts.
We'll do that.
The poles. I mean, we have a group. We work hard up there.
Can I speak for everybody? I think if you, if we can get volunteers, we will help.
I mean, we do volunteer. We go pick up trash. We have trash cleanup day. I mean, we work hard up there. We, we do movies.
Some of the things, Judge, if I can interrupt, like, I'm just going to be honest with you. Mindy, you've talked about this, like, the putt-putt golf course, to me, it ain't worth refi, it ain't worth fixing.
It's not.
Well, it's not utilized enough to fix. The gazebo's probably not utilized enough to spend the money on the fix.
Let me ask you a question, Billy. I think this is fair. That park has been in bad shape for quite a while.
It has.
Before I became judge, it had declined substantially. Phelps is the same way. I mean, they put a pitching machine out, or a batting, had a batting cage and a pitching machine, and it was just allowed just to sit out in the weather and rust. Skateboard park, it was filled with garbage that nobody utilized. A putt-putt golf course, when I came in as judge, it didn't even have astroturf or artificial grass on it. The swimming pool at Phelps was leaking like a sieve, and we finally got that fixed last year. A lot of this infrastructure's old. That pool at Hardy's been there for...
It's not very old, is it?
Paul, how long's that pool been at Hardy? Nee, do you know?
It's good.
Yeah.
How long's it been there, though? How long has that pool been there?
From 2004. They come out of ground plus...
Okay. So, you know, we're still almost 20 years down the road. There's needs to be some upgrading and just to make it look better. We're, we're willing to do that if we can come up with a plan. What I would tell you is if you can get some ideas to us, I have no problem with you all forming any kind of community committee to help run the park. We can make a motion to do that and give you authority to do that and designate somebody to schedule it. By causing here, we can give that number to them to give to the person that's going to be scheduled. We just need one person that can do the scheduling on it.
Because we, like, I mean, that park is used a lot. People walk. I mean, there's people up there every evening. And also, I don't know if you looked when you were up there, but there used to be a campsite up there that has a walking trail, and it's full of big logs, and, and I don't know where those came from.
I would have no idea either. Paul, do you know where that's at? Any idea why?
That's before you got...
So before we came in, they were dumping debris up there?
They were.
So let me get this right. So before, before I came in as judge, they were dumping debris from the road department at a county park?
Where did the old dumpster come from?
Above it.
You can't even use it.
Can't use the walking track because of it?
It's not, it's a walking trail. It goes up in the mountain. Yeah, you can't use it.
Well, we can try to get that cleaned up.
Please.
So what, here's what I would ask you to do, is to, you know, Commissioner Blackburn, you want to jump in here?
Go ahead.
You want to add anything? I mean, I think we can, we can fix this. And I think if you give us a plan and tell us what you need, we'll make a motion, give Paul the authority to go buy the materials for you. And of course, we'll have to make sure that, make it legally correct. I think Roy would say we would have to have some kind of, you know, we just can't go buy materials and give them to private systems. Paul would be in charge of making sure that all the money was spent on the park. I'm not saying that anybody would do anything wrong, but just make sure nobody questions it. Billy, you know how that goes. Somebody, you don't know what people are going to say. Fabian, you got something you want to add?
I would just say that I will, I will...
Okay. So Mr. Little, the road supervisor, is going to get a crew up there to clean that up. But Krista, Billy, if you get us a plan, tell us what you want to do, how you want to do it, we'll make sure it gets done. I can't tell you that we can find somebody to run that pool, because there's a lot of liability that goes with doing that.
I understand that.
But we'll pay for the cost of opening it, the chemicals. But the one thing I don't think we're in a position to do, simply because of manpower, is to go out and hire lifeguards. We don't have, you know, when I was growing up, Mr. Little was the lifeguard at the pool at Virgin. We had Ron Curry, who's educator, former football coach. He ran it. He did it during the summer. We don't have folks like that that we can rely on that have our experience, certified lifeguards. Somebody's going to have to go out and make sure that they can get lifeguards. Now, Mindy would be the perfect person to run the pool.
She would be. So now that it's warming up, could we, like, have a dedication service for him, that I could have all the family come in?
Here's what I would like to do. I would like to get it cleaned up and looking great, because your granddad, park that's going to bear the name of John R. Phillips, a man that I had immense respect for, needs to be suitable to bear his name. I think you would agree with that.
I do.
That park wouldn't be there but for your granddad. He was a, one of the best Christian men I know, and I have just immense respect for him. So I would like to get it really looking good before we do that.
But we do have a community, and we work hard up there. And we don't care to go in there and get our hands dirty and paint or pick up garbage or...
You tell us what you need. Tell us what you need.
I know that the dugout on the softball end needs painted, the yellow poles need painted.
We can put, we can put together a plan, and I can email it to you. One suggestion I would have, and I don't know, probably, I don't know what the feasibility would be of it, but it'd probably be minimal expense, is like I said, that gazebo's falling apart. It's a liability. The putt-putt golf course is falling apart.
And that one playground equipment is really old.
You can't use it. If we could take that out and just put a couple covered shelters in there.
Well, that's what, sort of what we're doing over at Phelps. We need new playground equipment in both places. We need to get rid of all of the blacktop at Phelps. We need to get rid of the gazebo over there that you're talking about, and we need to make it up to standards. I mean, there's certain standards that, that parks need to comply with, so if a kid falls, they don't get seriously injured.
They have some playground equipment that my kids played on when that's really, really old up there.
And that needs to be replaced. So if you'll get us a plan of what you want to do, I've got Greg working on Phelps. I'll put Greg to work with you as far as, because Greg's a procurement officer, so if something needs to be, if you need to buy something, you can get with Greg. He can put the plan together, working with you and Mr. Williamson. You get it back to me before the next court meeting, and we'll take action on it.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we've already started talking about the pools. I want to get the pool open at Phelps, because there's a lot of kids over there that wouldn't have access to a pool otherwise. The same thing's true with Hardy.
There's nothing over there. Our movies are shut down. There's nothing for kids to do. We have nothing.
Well, the biggest problem we have is the loss of population. And people don't realize that, we were at Phelps the other night, and I'll use this as an example, between K through 12, they've got 525 kids, about 40 a class. And that loss of population is going to be a major problem for us to overcome in the future, because, I mean, if you don't have working age people here, if you don't have young people coming into the workforce, it's going to be hard to bring new jobs in or to even sustain the businesses that we have. So I can commit to you that as judge executive, I'll make a motion to implement whatever plan that you give us, as long as we can afford it and it's reasonable. If you want to designate somebody, we can do that by motion to, to schedule the park. I know Juanita was working on it. You just tell us what you want to do, and I want to say this, you're the first folks that have come in here and said, we want to help. We want to help get the park redone. We want to get the dugouts redone. And I appreciate that, because not a lot of people step forward. A lot of people want to complain. Not a lot of people want to do something about it. It's easy to get on Facebook and complain, as you well know. But I want to thank you all for coming in here and being willing to help. This is something that we started talking about last year, and we're going to see it through this year. We'll get that park looking.
Right. Well, when he was sick, I still drove him up there on the weekends to let him check that park out. So it was still important to him, even when he was sick.
Which is important to the community.
I want to keep it going for him.
So we'll get this done. You get me a list, Billy, Krista, and we'll, and we'll take action on it.
And are we, are, did you get, were you able to get a plaque to put up in his honor or?
We've got it sitting in there. Have you seen it yet?
I have not.
You will walk, you want to go get it? What you, you don't know if you can carry it? Let's take about a two-second break, and we'll go get it for you. All right? Fabian, can you help Jeannie get that real quick? We need to take a break for a second. We'll stand at ease for just a second. And we've got a plan, I think, on how to proceed on this. The next item is the acknowledgement or receipt of the Pike County Jail budget for fiscal year 2023. Frankie can answer any questions about this. We did increase the budget this year. We're going to replace the elevator in the back of the jail. It needs to be done. It's about a $300,000 project. And Mr. Morris has encountered a increase in food costs, which I think everybody thinks is reasonable with inflation the way it's been. So I would make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Pike County Jail budget for fiscal year, actually, should this be calendar year 2023, Frank, or is that fiscal year? Fiscal year 2023, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn? And any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of resolution, support of the 2023-2024 Kentucky Recycling Grant and Authorization to Execute All Grant Documents to Participate. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Blackburn, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a discussion, recommendation of the bid for Maynard Fork Waterline Extension Project. We have Sharon, if she could come up, and we have Mike Hill from Summit Engineering to discuss this line item. Or this, I should say, agenda item. I'm not going to put a time constraint on you, but you don't have much time.
Gotcha.
It's been a long day. I'm doing all of us a favor.
Yeah.
All right. Please proceed. You have the floor. Introduce yourself for the record, and then please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Hill with Summit Architects and Engineers. I've got two projects to update you on tonight. The first is the Maynard Fork Water Supply Line Project. We opened bids on both projects.
Yeah, might need to pull the green lights on also.
Yes. Okay. Again, for the record, Mike Hill, Summit Architects and Engineers. We have two projects. The first is Maynard Fork Water Supply Line Project. We opened bids on February 28th and received three bids. The low bid from Jones Contracting was $224,400. The high bid was $317,250. So a spread of just a little over $90,000 between the three bids. We have a budget, a construction budget for the project of $150,000 plus a contingency. So that means that our project is approximately 50% over our available construction funding. That budget was last updated in 2021, which is, I'm sure you're probably aware, at some point in the funding process, we don't, we don't have the ability to continue updating our budgets.
You need to speak up. You have to speak up and be a little bit louder up here, so.
Thank you. So our budget is, we're about 50% over our available funding with the low bid, and that's based on a budget that was last updated in 2021. And as I'm sure you're already aware, we've seen significant construction cost increases for, for, for materials as well in that, in that period of time.
Who, I don't have a list of the bidders on this project. Do you have a list of those bidders?
Yeah, they're, the low bidder was Jones Contracting. The second low was A Grade, and the third was BP Pipeline.
I don't see that we have, let's see here, maybe we do have. It would help if I put glasses on.
It's really small talk.
Looks like there was three total bids. Is that correct?
That's right.
What is your recommendation as the project engineer on this?
I see a couple of ways to proceed. The first is if there are additional funds available to make up the shortfall, I would recommend we award to Jones Contracting, but that would require $70,000 in additional funds on top of the in-kind match of $40,000 that's already necessary.
Sharon, would you recommend that we, would you recommend that we submit a grant request for coal severance?
Yes, I would.
For LGEDF funds?
LGEDF, yes, I would, because every project that I'm working on right now is about the same percent over. I don't care which one it is. I mean, it's following, and the bids seem to be reasonable. Gordon, that's what's happening right now.
So on the agenda is discussion and recommendation of the bid for the Mountain Water, I'm sorry, the Maynard Fork Water Project. Roy, do you think that's sufficient to allow us to act on this tonight, the way this language is laid out here? Or do we need to wait till the next regular meeting?
Judge, it does say...
Think we can agree to award the bid at this point in time and then submit a request? Can we make a motion to submit a LGEDF fund request?
He'll put in the back of the room here is what...
Well, we can't move forward with, with this project without the money, correct?
That's correct.
So the folks on Maynard Fork are not going to get their water if we don't come up with the money.
Yes.
I know that's Commissioner Scott's district, I believe. Commissioner, would you be supportive of a motion to draw down coal severance tax funds to fund that?
Well, I'll tell you, these people down there, there's some really good people down there, and, you know, I was raised down in there too, and these people need this water so bad. You know, they've waited and waited and waited for it, you know, and just like the people on Brushy over there too. I was talking to a boy out of church Sunday, and he, he told me, he said, "Ronald said, you wouldn't believe how bad her water is." And he said, "You can put it in a bucket." He said, "The dog wouldn't drink it," or "The animals wouldn't drink it." That it had like a greasy film, and he said he had softeners on, he had everything. These people really, really need the help on Brushy too, and Sycamore or whatever, you know.
Would you, would you support drawing down coal severance tax to make sure we can pay for this?
Well, if, if there's no other way, you know...
We'd have to either take it out of the county's budget, but we've got economic development money sitting there we can use. So my recommendation is that we draw down the coal severance tax.
I think that'd be good.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to award the bid based upon Mr. Hill's recommendation to Jones Construction. Let's just be clear, no relation to me.
Correct, yes.
Don't know who they are. And they're probably somebody on Facebook making a comment. Don't know, where are they from? Do you know? Jones Construction.
I believe it's Lackey.
They're from Lackey, Kentucky.
I don't have any family in Lackey, so we can clarify that for the record. I will make a motion to award the bid to Jones Construction for the stated amount and to submit a request for LGEDF funds to cover the shortfall or deficiency in the amount of the available funds to the, I'm sorry, the bid amount to the extent that it exceeds the available funds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Is there anything else? You have another one, you said, another project?
Yes, one more project. The Brushy-Sycamore Waterline Project. We also opened bids on that the same day. The low bidder on that project was Boca Enterprises, and that project was split up into a base bid with two alternates. We recognized the likelihood that bids were going to exceed our funding on that one. So we broke it up into pieces so we could have a project that could be awarded within the funding we had.
Okay. We're going to have to, we can't do anything on this one. This is not on the agenda for tonight. I'll get this one done for you on the 21st. If you'll just go ahead and tell me, just, you can go ahead and update us on it. There's nothing, we're not going to take action on it.
Yeah, this, this is, the funding recipient for this one is actually Mountain Water District. So they took action on this project at their last court, at their last board meeting.
This is on?
Brushy Fork in Sycamore.
All right. And how's that project going?
It's also over budget, but Mountain Water was able to award the base bid plus one of the two alternates within the funding available. So the amount that exceeds the funding is about 500 and, well, $455,000 approximately So the amount that exceeds the funding is about 500 and, well, 455,000 approximately to finish out the entire project.
So if you'll get us the documents on that, we'll look at that as well. Sharon, any other potential sources of funding without having to draw down severance tax?
No, because that's the Cleaner Water Fund Round One from KIA. You know, they gave us our allotment, that was it. We got the additional 708,000 for the underserved, and we're still overbid 400 and some thousand.
Is that common, what you're seeing right now, Mike, with all the, with construction costs?
It's widespread. We're, we're not only seeing it in this kind of construction, but building construction and other types of construction as well.
What kind of percent increases are you seeing in these projects?
Well, the 50% that Maynard Fork was over and the probably 30%, well, 20 to 25% that Brushy-Sycamore is over is not uncommon.
You know, we've got the landfill that we're going to be looking, dealing with this year, the landfill expansion. We've got the rest of the project at Wolf Pit Industrial Site. It is concerning to see the cost increases that.
We're already over 400,000 at Wolf Pit, and I asked EDA for an additional 400,000 because what they told me was that people are not doing their projects and they're turning the funding back in. So we're on the list, we're number five. When the money, this money is getting turned back in to finish our project.
We went up, I mean, the bid on the Senior Citizen Center here went overbid substantially. So everything that the county has been working on for some time is seeing, by the time we get, you know, the wheels of government move slowly, by the time we start a project now to the time we're getting some of these things under construction, the cost increases are just phenomenal. And that's going to be a problem we have to deal with.
I mean, we typically put a 10% contingency in a construction project, but that's when labor and supplies were at a stable, or fairly stable over so many years. And now, nothing's stable.
Commissioner Scott has some questions about, I think he asked about what's covered in the alternates. Explain that.
Do you all have copies of the color map?
We don't have it, it's not, well, we've got it laying here, but it's not, it's not on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
So, so the base bid includes everything on the Sycamore Creek side of the project. Well, I should say, the base bid plus alternate two that was awarded includes everything on the Sycamore Creek side. And on the Brushy Fork side, it includes everything from 881 out to almost Mill Road.
Long Fork included in that?
Yes.
At Maynard Fork?
Yes, Long Fork is included.
So when you say the alternates, I mean, is this dependent on funding is what we're talking about? If we don't get additional funding, you do?
If we don't get additional funding, we can't do what we called Alternate One, which is the remainder of the Brushy Fork and the Mill Road portion.
But if we come up with the funding, then we can do all of Brushy.
Correct.
Does that get, are there any creeks that are left out? That leave any areas of Brushy out that won't get water on this part of the project?
Nothing, no. That covers all of it.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
There is, I know y'all supposed to connect there at the Mouse Ride Fork, off of 881, right?
Repeat that for me?
You're supposed to connect where you come off of 881, right? Where it comes to the right fork, right?
That's right.
Okay, you go down the road about a mile. There's a big old hollow on you, right? Is that included in that? It's called Curry Brink.
No, I don't think we had any side hollows between there and Mill Road.
Or the main Brushy Road.
Roy, yes.
On the main road.
You'll come up, Roy. Randy, I should, whoever wants to. Just introduce yourself in case folks watching you on TV don't know who you are.
I'm Roy Sawyers, Mountain Water District, General Manager.
Randy Tackett, Board of Commissioners Chairman, Mountain Water District.
Chairman, welcome. Roy, please proceed.
Just in regards to that, everything is main line all the way down through Brushy. There is no sidelines. Sidelines would be something that would have to be in the future in regards to additional projects. It covers everything on the main road all the way down to Mill Road. And, and all of Sycamore, finish it out. That's what we propose to do with all the funding for, if we can get it, is to get everything completely done over there.
Does it take Mill Brink in when you get there?
Yeah, that, it would take in Mill Road, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you, if you get all the funding.
That's mine, really.
Got a question for you, different, completely different project.
Okay.
I had Senator Philip Wheeler's office contacted us. They were wanting to know, over at Pawl, there was a project that Mountain Water submitted or proposed to do 7,000 foot of water line, or 70 some hundred feet of water line in Pawl, to try to take in 22 additional houses. But the message that we had was that there had not been a request to draw down any funds for that project. Are you familiar with that at all?
Yeah, we worked up, we worked up an estimate and provided that, I think, to Commissioner Booth at the time. It should be in the KIA.
It's in the risk.
Profile, in the risk.
I think it was submitted, but I don't, how, do you know how much the funding was?
Gosh, I can look, let me get my phone and see if I can find it while you're.
I tell you, we can go on, we can do that, talk about it at the break or something. Sharon, can you give us some ideas what we might be able to do to help those folks in Pawl get water over there? Because that has been a problem for a while. People have had to, had to, you know, have water hauls and so.
Typically, when you try to get money from ARC, places like that, if it's not an emergency, like a disaster, it has to be economic development. And if it's not economic development, it's hard to get water lines.
Well, we can go on, we can talk about it. We just need to see, would you, Jeannie, get them a copy of that letter that we received from Senator Wheeler's office and let Roy get with us at the break? See if he can provide additional information? We can respond to the Senator over.
Rural Development does that too, but it's based on the income of that area. The max you can get from Rural Development is 75%. But that has to be the lowest income.
So what I would propose, Mike, Randy, Roy, and Sharon, we would put this on the agenda and talk about it in more detail at the next meeting. It's got to come up with the money. I mean, we've got very limited options. Doesn't make sense not to finish this project because this may be the only opportunity that we have to get water in to Brushy like this. I know that it's important to Commissioner Scott because he's from there and lives there and need to make sure the folks over there get water.
I, I found it, the Pawl project was estimated right at 400,000. But now, look at those numbers right now. It will probably need to be updated based on what I see for pricing for some of the piping.
550, 600 probably, looking.
So increase the price on it as well.
But it's just water line, it's not booster pumps, and it's not all that other stuff.
No, 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 just looking at the pricing, like on 4-inch PVC, water line's $22. You're probably looking closer to 30.
Okay. And you get me information on this project, Sharon?
I can pull it from the portal.
Funding options there might be, if you can pull them off the portal for us. Folks, I appreciate you all. Randy, you think you'd like that?
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You said you're just doing the main road, right?
Yes.
What if the people in the holler wanted to run their own water line and you put the meter at the main road? Could they do that?
We, we could probably, they pay for a tap fee and a centimeter beside the road, but they'll have to have easements from, from probably the county to, to dig the ditch up the hollows as well as any property owners they may have to go across.
Well, they own all the properties.
Okay. Yeah, we could probably set a meter at, at the mouth of a hollow for someone.
Mr. Luge, you have something to add?
I think we'd have to look at each case individually and make decisions based on each separate case because it's, it's harder to say, yeah, we can do it without looking at the, at the conditions and everything. Because people he's talking about lives up the hollow. I mean, ain't going to help them if it's just going down the main road.
Well, it picks up approximately 60, 50, 60 homes down through there on the main transmission. Generally, what you run is the main transmission line first because you've got the main road and the ditch line. And then you do come back later with more funding and do your sidelines. That's the way it generally works.
We don't get the main line, you ain't never going to get water.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I'm saying if they wanted to put water to their house, why couldn't they run a line from the main road?
Once we get it installed, we can send staff out to look at it to see if there's probability of them putting it in. I mean, they can look at it and see then.
Won't fund you for one customer, not two or three.
How far it would have to run, any idea how far they'd have to run it?
How far does Mitch on them live up there?
I'd say it's over a mile.
Problem is, and I think I can, I can tell you this from experience. If it's over, a line extension that long, the Public Service Commission would not let the district pay for it, is that correct? From one house?
Yeah, if it's a line extension.
A line extension?
Yeah.
Line extensions of over, what, 900 feet have to be submitted? Is it 900 feet to the PSC, is that right?
It's something in that range.
I'm not aware.
But am I right about?
Yeah, it's in that range.
If you do a water line extension?
Has to be approved.
Has to be approved. They would not approve public money for a single house. If it's a mile, you're talking.
If he's just talking about setting a meter basis at the mouth of a hollow and they run it from there, it'd be left up to them.
Let them run it.
You don't know, you don't know if you have enough pressure to push it that far and the volume of water and depends on the size of line, you're looking at hydraulic issues then, maybe.
You'd have to look at all the issues about whether you could get the water actually to them.
Judge, there's about 12 families lives up a hollow. There's more lives up hollow than I down the road.
Then you might be able to, then you might be able to get public money for it. Is it, is it one house or is it more?
No, there's about 12, about 12 families.
If it's 12 families, we got to have something we can work on.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'd give them an option if, if you couldn't get them water, if they wanted to run their own water line.
We might be, with that many houses down the road, if the legislature keeps releasing some of this money from the COVID funds for water and sewer, with the, you know, $2 billion surplus that the state has, we might get some more money for water and sewer.
With that, with that amount of footage and that many people involved, it would have to be an engineer design drawing and PSC approval or Division of Water Approval.
Let me ask you, Roy and Randy, and Mike, have you all seen any money coming out of this federal infrastructure bill that was supposed to be for broadband or water or sewer? I'm not seeing that money released yet.
No, it's not released because EDA hasn't gotten their money yet. And, but the biggest portion that EDA was going to receive was for broadband. I did read that.
And there's been no broadband money released?
And the smallest portion was going to be assistance to coal communities, which is us, for infrastructure and things like that. But the, the biggest portion was going to go to broadband. But there's not been anything from EDA that they've received anything yet.
What's the timeframe, if we can, you know, come up with the additional money to do both sets of this?
On the Maynard, on the Maynard Fork Project, there's a 90-day bid hold.
What about the, if we come up with additional money for Brushy and Sycamore?
On, on Brushy, any additional funds could be change ordered into the contract and added when they're, when they become available.
Who got the contract with?
Boca Enterprises?
Out of Paintsville, I believe.
Yes, yeah, Hager Hill area.
Right. I don't have anything else, you gentlemen, you have any other questions or anything? So Mike, if you'll get us the stuff on this before the meeting, we'll get it on the agenda, look at it, we'll check with DOG, make sure the funds are there, and put our options on.
Will do. Thank you all.
I just sound like appreciate everything y'all could do to try to help them over there, the whole families over there, that's great.
All right, the next item is a approval of a rent increase from 850 to 995 per month for the maintenance garage building at 79 Davis Street that is used by Pike County Emergency Management. Mr. CJ Childers negotiated the lease. Is this a, just an increase in renewal of the lease that we have for the storage building for the equipment now?
Yeah. I think for about 10 years, how many increases do you want?
All right, I would make a motion to approve the lease and the increase in rent as stated from 850 a month to 995 per month for the maintenance garage building for Pike County Emergency Management. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, Mr. Childers, I'm going to let you come up and, and explain what we're dealing with on the next item, which is the first reading of an amendment to the 911 Ordinance, Section 3, which relates to the 911 fee.
Okay. As of the last meeting, that the court settled on the $48 per month, or $40 per year residential. And they asked us to come back with everything for the commercial. This has got all the commercial. Actually, the ordinance actually incorporates the residential and all the commercial into the same ordinance. It's an amendment of the original ordinance.
And as I read the ordinance, it would not assess any fee on churches. Let me find that language. Neve, you'll call that to Mike, show me where that is in here.
Churches, voluntary fire departments, rescue squads, food banks, state, federal, and local government buildings, all will be exempt.
All right, and I think there's also provision to exempt residential structures where?
The federal poverty guidelines.
Based on the federal poverty guidelines.
Yeah.
And this removes the 911 fee on landlines effective January 1st, 2024.
Yes.
It's something we may have to look at depending on how we get this implemented, how the money comes in.
Correct. But we had to, we had to put something on there for some kind of date, so we figure we go from there. And if it needs to be adjusted toward the end of the year, after we start seeing the revenue come in from the taxes, we could always come back and adjust it if we actually had to.
No vote is in order at this time, this is a first reading. But before I pass Colonel Downey to do the first reading by summary, you all have any questions about it?
Yeah, I sure do. Right here where it says they can raise it at the end of two years without coming to us for approval. I don't like it because we've been, we've been raked over the coals over this, and I would rather you have come and talked to us before.
It's been in, well, the reason that was put in like that is because that was in the original ordinance because it's a CPI index. It's not a, it ends up being a percentage is all it can be raised.
I don't, I still don't like the way it's worded because y'all could, at the end of two years, raise it $20 a month without us knowing about it.
It's a, it's a, it's a percentage on, based on the CPI.
Let me say why I sort of like this idea. Just like the garbage bill. When you had a bunch of people playing politics with solid waste, and they go, well, I'll use, I'll take a better example. Mountain Water, you've got the chairman here. Randy, how long, how long did Mountain Water go without a rate increase? 17 years? 16, 17 years without? So, you know, what you do is when you get people making political decisions instead of doing what's right, and you go 16 or 17 years without a rate increase, and the next thing you know, instead of having little bitty rate increases, people get hit with a big rate increase. Same thing should have been done with solid waste. If it goes up a percent a year, it's a lot easier for people to absorb that, particularly people on a fixed income, as opposed to wait until the system's ready to collapse and having to put a 40% rate increase on. So it's totally up to the court where they want to do that. But I don't think that we should, because we may not be here in four years. I don't want to have the future of 911 service in this county tied to the political whims of a bunch of people who may not be willing to make hard decisions like this court's done. Now, that's my opinion, you all could outvote me. It's totally, I would think it would be better to have those little bitty increases. CPI usually, it went up 6.5% this year. That's an unusual year. Usually, it's 1% or 2%. So.
Yeah, in the past, it's been like a nickel.
A nickel.
Never, it's never been any, it's never been over than just a few cents is all it's ever raised in the past.
So, you know, I just think that for the future of the system, just like the, the water bill should be, and we've seen this with the pair rates. I mean, you get a 30% rate increase requested, you know, or a 40%, people can't absorb that. They can't handle that. But they can handle a nickel a month or something like that a lot easier than waiting until the thing's ready to collapse, which is the situation we're in right now. So, but, you know, that can be taken out. We can give it a first reading, and if the court, commissioners, I'll let you all chime in here, what do you, what do you want to leave the CPI in it or take it out? It takes politics, in my opinion, completely out of it when you have the CPI.
And it also locks us into, it's, it's not going to do any big jump. It's, it's always going to be whatever the CPI says, it cannot ever go past the CPI.
But what you're saying, you can, you had to bump it up of a cost to living or the thing, you can do it over two years, right?
Over two years. No more, no more than two years. It has two years at a time. And in the past, from 1989 until now, it's been bumped four times.
How much each time? How much each time?
Like a nickel was the last time. Well, except for when it come to the court for the big, for the 99 cents, but before that, the CPI was like a nickel.
I mean.
And that's the problem, Commissioner. In the past, the prior administrations wouldn't raise it. Prior courts wouldn't raise it. It had three raises. But the last administration, the last court raised it 90 some cents.
99 cents.
99.
2019, it went up about 90 some cents because it would have, your 911 system wouldn't have made it as long as it has if that hadn't been done.
No. You had to, you had to shut down in 2019, or right shortly thereafter.
So, you know, CPI, to me, makes more sense than having to make, you know, waiting five or 10 years and having to raise it where people can't absorb it in.
And it also stops any kind of large increase.
But, you know, if you all want it out, we can take it out.
I, Judge, I really don't know which will be the best, but, uh, you know, like you say, if, uh, he went and saved my years and then they got nothing, and the court falls back on the court, uh, got to go to them big decisions over, you know, I mean, I, I don't really know what really tell you truth about it. I wouldn't want to see that, uh, I think they got enough money on what we were going to do, you know, for, uh, I think it was, it was plenty enough money and I wouldn't want to see it go two years and then they bumping up another dollar or two. I, I wouldn't think that'd be right.
They can't, they, I mean, I think the C P I would prevent anybody from ever having to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great, you know, I mean, be good.
That, that's why, that's why we put it as a C P I index. And that's why it was in the original ordinance back from nineteen eighty-nine when they originally started nine one one nineteen eighty-nine.
I don't know, Chuck, is Chuck sitting back there? Chuck was, did the solid waste ordinance not have a C P I in it? I think it did, but they just never took it.
Right.
So.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we're going to take it. I mean, it would have to be a drastic measure before we took it.
But, you know, I'll give you an example about solid waste. If they had taken the C P I that was in that ordinance, the prior administration would never have had to do what was done. And you wouldn't, but, you know, when you're putting one point eight million in coal severance tax into solid waste, so you don't have to make a hard decision like the prior folks did. You know, I mean, it was just poor, it's just poor management. This may, this is, to me, the best thing that you could do to make sure that fixed income families and low income families are not saddled with a potentially large rate increase at one time down the road. That's my opinion. I may be wrong. My wife tells me I frequently am, so. So we can give it a first reading and, uh, but we do need, in my opinion, to move forward with this because if we don't get this passed, you're going to be sitting, you're not going to be able to get on the tax bills this year. And then the court is going to have to find the money to keep nine one running because right now there's not enough money in the account to pay the state police for the dispatch. So it's, it's likely that the fiscal court will have to come up with the money to keep nine one one running until this is done. What you all tell me what you, what your thoughts on it are, and we can. If you want it out, we can get Roy to take it out. We can do the first reading. He can bring an amended version of it to the court next time because you can amend it after the reading as long as it doesn't change the substance or title. Take it out, but. Let us know, because, I mean, we'll go ahead and do the first reading. We got time to, to make a change and. Roy, uh, I had a couple typos in here in this thing, um. There was just a typo amount. Who, who typed this thing? Did you type this, C J?
Not all of it.
There's, there's, the grammatically, we need to talk a little bit. Hey, it's just one typo. It's on the bottom of page two. Next to last paragraph, it says, in absence of the P V A participation, the nine one one board will be forced to hire additional. There's a period that should be deleted. Employees to handle the creation of the building, handling the building issues.
Okay.
Well, you all can fix that. It's no big deal.
Okay, we'll fix that.
All right, so, uh, is there a, Colonel, go ahead. There's no motion in order, so you can give it the first reading.
All right, as Judge, as you indicated, I will do an abbreviated, uh, this is a, would be amendment of the nine one one ordinance, section three, nine one one fee. If anybody actually wants a copy of this whole thing, they can contact the judge's office once that error is corrected in the typo, or they can contact the county attorney's office, and we'll email you or get it to you somehow if you want it. Uh, basically, what's going on here is the nine one one board met and decided that they can no longer sustain nine one one with old landline fees. So they were proposing this new fee structure, and the old nine one one landline fees will go out effective one one twenty twenty-four. The residential areas would be forty-eight dollars, standard commercials, a hundred twenty, medium commercials, three hundred, large commercials, six hundred, exempt franchise, and these are all specified in the ordinance, are twenty-four hundred dollars a year. Things that would be exempt are your volunteer fire departments, your rescue squads, churches, food banks, and federal, state, local governments are exempt from the fee. Um, a residential area will be occupied if it's, if there's somebody actually in it or if it's ready to be occupied. So if you've got like somebody renting your properties, those would go to the landlords. Uh, but it doesn't actually, it could be a place that you're trying to rent or somebody lives in it that's definitely going to count. The big thing that, and your commissioners, I think, uh, they've been very vocal with this. They wanted to think about, uh, the poverty level. That adjusts every year under the formula that the federal government uses. I'm not the expert on it, but you're looking at if your income's below, let's say, twelve hundred dollars a month, uh, which a lot of people living just on social security are, then you would be exempt from this, and they would have the forms that you would fill out at the office. And, uh, you know, they may request you to bring something from the social security office and sign a statement saying this is what you make. And it's based on the number of people that actually live in the household. The twelve hundred dollars is for one person, so it does go up if it's a husband and wife, typically grandparents, grandchild. The, uh, the office may have to hire additional people which would come out of their budget. They're funding because of P V A's office. Doesn't have to participate in this if, you know, as far as the legwork, if they don't want to. Uh, they will ask them. If they say no, then they will actually have to hire a couple people, which is included in their budget. So Judge, I believe basically I have covered all the points of this, and there is the provision that you were talking about whether or not they can adjust it for the C P I. Uh, if you take that out for the next meeting, you all vote on it, we would be good. I guess you all just need to determine that.
We need to, can we get this advertised before the next, we have time to advertise it before the next? Have to be more than seven or seven. We need to look at the statute. Can you look at the statute just to make sure we've, we've met the requirements?
Yes, Judge.
It goes in the paper on Tuesday. Getting the weekend, well, no, we can't. Thinking today's Tuesday, but today's Thursday. So if we can get it in the paper Tuesday, that gives us seven days. I thought it was seven days, but I don't know if it's seven days or more than seven days. We can, can you look at that?
We can look at that.
All right. All right, next item is, um, approval for the county judge to execute the interlocal cooperated cooperative agreement with the Department of State Police for the continued maintenance and operation of a public safety answering point to answer all enhanced nine one one calls and dispatch public safety services or extend, transfer, relay nine one one calls to appropriate public safety agencies. Colonel, you've reviewed the agreement. Is that correct? Is it in order? Is there, this is the agreement we have to have for the state police to continue to do the nine one one dispatching with a new rate. Uh, I think the rate increased by roughly a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Is that correct? Almost two hundred thousand to state police. And that's what has driven this, uh, the urgency of this issue with, uh, the nine one one B, uh, issue. The cost for the state police to do dispatching will be four hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents per year. That is beginning January first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and it will be reviewed bi-annually after that, so that's why uh, I don't think the state police is going to cut it in two years, and I think that's one of the reasons that, uh, that the C P I provision was put in there because I can for, I can foresee the state police increasing it more than C P I. And even if you do the C P I, Commissioner Scott, if the state police keep increasing this uh, the way they did last year, you know, we may be back at the drawing board. So, uh, is there a motion to authorize the judge executive to execute the agreement as previously stated?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? See you now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes, next item is, uh, something we have to do every year. It's approval of a contract with Kevin Jerome Prater for services of a sound system and booking of entertainment at the Pike County Courthouse during hillbilly days twenty twenty-three. An authorization for the issuance of a check in the amount of two thousand eight hundred. Mister Prater will be responsible for scheduling and maintaining the music at the courthouse. He will also participate in the stump speaking. Uh, the fee is the same as last year. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Prove.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? See you now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is a first reading of the Pike County Road Ordinance, um. Mister Little, can you come on up, please? And Colonel, I'll let you come on up to. This is, um, an ordinance that changes the county, uh, road ordinance, and let me go into that here momentarily. Uh, I have looked at all the statutes on county roads. This is something that we have been trying to come up with a way to do this for some time. Right now, there is no road ordinance on the books. There's language that we sort of modified that's in the county administrative code that could be considered a road ordinance, but we know that the way that roads have been taken in here in the county for years has not, in my opinion, been done in a way that complies with Kentucky law. Uh, there are statutes, uh, Roy, I think it's K R S chapter one seventy-eight.
Correct.
That states, for instance, you can't take a road in unless it meets a public purpose. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, Judge.
And you can't take a road in unless it meets the county's construction standards. And what's happened in the past is you've taken in roads with one, two, or three houses that doesn't serve a public purpose. The general public don't drive on it. School buses don't drive on them, uh. There's no business reason for it. And there was an attorney general's opinion that was issued a couple years ago at the request of Harlan County Judge Executive Dan Mosley that said, and this is an attorney general's opinion, it's not a court decision. But I've always said the attorney general's, uh, folks can put you in jail, so I think you probably ought to follow their lead. That, uh, opinion stated that a road that only serves one or two houses cannot be a pub, does not, cannot meet a public purpose. So there are roads that, there was a road that Mister Little and I went and looked at a while back, and at one time there was two or three homes on it. Well, now there's just one house. And we're going to see that more often as we continue to lose population if we can't find a way to stop it. Another statute says, this just came up in the last administration, it was a hot topic. Uh, you can't take a road into the road system that doesn't meet the county's construction standards. And I think the reason that the law was put on the books was it's not right for the taxpayers. For instance, if, if Fabian Little has a bridge that's ready to fall in, and there's two houses on the other side of the creek, he comes down here and petitions the court to take it in. The court takes it in. Taxpayers pay to put a new bridge in or fix that bridge, and then the next week he's down here with a petition asking it be taken out. That's clearly illegal, and that was the whole purpose behind the legislature change in the law. It's not right for the taxpayers to pick up, uh, the repairs or take on, uh, private property related issues under the guise of taking it in the road system. Uh, so if you ever want to look at those, chapter one seventy-eight, and I think part of it's in one seventy-nine too. Is that correct, Roy?
Yes, Judge. Seven, one seventy-eight is the bigger.
One seventy-eight.
It's one seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight, one seventy-nine pertains to roads, but not this.
So what this road ordinance does is it establishes a way also to help with economic development. So right now, you have a company that wants to come in here and develop a piece of property. The county can't make a county road into a piece of property or take over maintenance of a piece of property, even if they're building businesses in there that will put people to work. This gives the court the option to take in properties for economic development purposes into the road system, bridges, cul-de-sacs, roads. So I'll just summarize it real quick. Uh, it defines what county roads are, and it says roads, it, but it also is not going to be punitive in any way. It says roads which have previously been accepted into the county road system and recognized as such and given a C R number in the county road system or remain in the county road system unless formally removed. So this doesn't remove anybody at all. It would, that would take a vote of the court in compliance with petitions and public notice and all that. This is no road shall be accepted into the county road system following the effective date of this ordinance unless each of the following conditions should be R met. Is that right, Roy? Let's see, each of the following conditions is met. No, I think that's right. You're right.
It's each, it's is. I mean, we can.
Each is, that's right. Or is it R, Roy?
I know you're stuck, but.
Well, I guess my teacher taught me that of the following conditions is a preposition. So it goes back to the act of which is each. Who knows? I mean, it's been so long since I've been in school. If you want R, Judge, I'll put R in there. I want to put a big R in there.
No, I'm just picking on you a little bit.
And if there's a teacher out there listening, I don't, please call me and let me know. I, I, I want it to be grammatically correct.
So, uh, each road is permissible under K R S one seventy-eight. To each road except in the county road system must serve a minimum of four separate and unique property owners with homes or businesses. Situated on the properties or the road must provide for new economic development opportunities, retail, commercial, industrial, or professional services businesses or some other legitimate benefit to the general public, i.e. public school building. There must be a written acknowledgement by all persons whose properties are served by the proposed county road that the road is public in nature and is being used without interruption by the general public for a period of five years or more. Said written acknowledgement shall include a source of title of all property owners. The written acknowledgement will serve as a dedication by the property owners to the Pike County, I'm sorry, to Pike County of sufficient right of way to meet minimum requirements of this ordinance. Each existing road adopted into the road system must have sufficient right of way. Thirty feet for a two-lane road, fifteen feet for a one-lane road. Upon submission of written acknowledgement, two viewers will be appointed by the judge executive with approval of the fiscal court. These two viewers, along with the road supervisor, will view the property, I'm sorry, the county road and report in writing to the court the number of properties served by said road and the owners of said property, the length and width of existing roadway that is currently being used by the general public for travel, and the current state of repair of said road and any extraordinary repairs necessary to render the road adequate safe for public travel if it is accepted into the road system. County will require any road to meet county construction standards before the road can be taken into the road system. At paragraph number four is to make sure it complies with the K R S. Also says that although no road shall be accepted into the county road system unless it meets the specifications, the, the decision whether to add a road into the system will be with the sole discretion of the fiscal court.
Judge, I'd just like to say too that the, uh, the widths that you had mentioned, those widths are set by K R S, not, not, uh, the court. So those are K R S widths. Um, it's just like, uh, if we take a road in and we don't designate it as a fifteen-foot right of way, it automatically falls to thirty foot. That's per K R S. So I would just want to make sure everyone knew that the, the widths of that road are set by K R S.
All right, you have any questions about it?
Oh, I don't. Do you?
I just think this clear, clears the air and makes us going forward to make sure that we are in compliance with stat, state law so that we don't have to ever worry about losing county road aid money, which would be a catastrophe.
And we still have a lot of cleanup to do too in the road department for our bookkeeping.
And I'll say this, the record keeping at times, years, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, there are roads that the county's maintained for years that there's no record of them ever been taken in. Is that?
No, it is true, and that's what I was telling, uh, Commissioner Blackburn and Commissioner Scott, is that we are losing money. Uh, you know, part of our funding is based on our road miles that we work. Uh, you know, part of our funding is based on our road miles that we work. Well, we know that our mileage we work is actually higher than what the state has us for, and that's when I was saying we need to clean this up, and that's my goal is to have this all cleaned up here within this four years. It's a, it's a big task, but.
In the last court, the state gave us a couple of years to have to get, and we took out and cleaned up how much then? I mean.
Judge, I, I, I don't have the number. I mean, it was a lot. Well, actually it did, it took actually three years to get all that done, and.
When a road's taken into the road system, it's got to be reported to the Big Sandy Area Development District, and it's got to be point, uh, uh, it's got to be sent to the Department of Transportation.
They view the road also, then they can.
They both, the ad district, does the transportation cabinet view?
There's a member of both that will view it or is supposed to view it, and then they determine that, yes, it is eligible to be a county road, and then they assign it the CR number.
So in the last administration, when you looked at the county's records and you looked at the ad district records and you looked at the state's records, none of the three matched, and we've got it closer. It's not where it probably needs to be.
It's not, but it is, it's better than it was, but it's still, it still lacks the ways, uh, we have a lot of work to do to get it where we want it. But my goal is to every road that's worked, you know, every road mile, it has that CR number. And I was explaining to them also is that's one way, uh, one of the bridges that was in question, uh, you know, I thought that the, the bridge was a county road. I knew the county had worked it. Well, I'd put in for bridge funding and it comes back, well, it can't be funded because it's not a county road, you know, because, uh, it had never been put, it had never been voted on. I mean, it never been put in.
There was a road that had had decking put on the bridge that we thought was a county road, and we were trying to help these people. We can't find the road in the road system. I went all the way, and Fabian knows this, I talked to the General Counsel of the Transportation Cabinet, Commissioner of Rural and Secondary Roads, they had no record of this road ever being taken in, and there was only two houses on it. So it, it didn't meet any of the requirements to be taken in, even under the existing way we were doing things.
That's, and that's correct. That's where the, that's where the whole problem was, is it wasn't in, it was never put in, but then it wasn't eligible for us to put it in.
Well, I mean, it may have been put in, but we'd had no proof of it, there was no documentation.
Well, there was no CR number, and in the eyes of the state and the funding for the, to get the funding to fix the bridge, it wasn't in, so therefore it was illegal.
So, uh, and I don't know if this has come up since the new commissioners have been here, to get state funding for emergency, like, bridge repair money.
Yeah.
You have to have a county road number.
You do.
From the state to get it, if you don't have that.
No funding. And like, and that's what's, you know, that's part of our road budget is based on our road miles. And that's why I want to get this, it's my goal is four years to have the, all those road miles logged accurately.
Colonel, give a very brief, uh, reading, you can read it by title only, like we used to do in Frankfurt.
Okay. An ordinance established by the Pike County Fiscal Court regulated acceptance of roads into the county road system. It, uh, is bringing us up to date in, like, you've note, noted, I think the big thing for anybody listening out there, if your road is in the county road system and you got a road, nobody's coming to, to look at it right now. So what we're trying to do is when we, in, going into the future, that we know that when we take a road in, it meets the standards, uh, that, and there'll be a, two people that go out and examine this thing, the road commissioner will look at it, so it should protect us.
Works. Thank you, Colonel. This will be on the agenda at the next meeting. Fabian, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna save you a trip. We're gonna skip over Mr. Finn, because he's got a lot of stuff for me to do. All right. Uh, we have the county, uh, road department open work orders and the, uh, completed work orders, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Commissioners, have anything they need to add to this, uh, this list of, uh, open work orders? Anything y'all want to bring? Commissioner, uh, Atkins and I were talking about another issue. We had some folks up on Lizzie Fork that may have put a drain in, it may not have been done quite right. And we do not have an ordinance currently that allows us to make someone change a drain or something that's causing damage to the county road. Is that true?
Oh, that is correct, and, you know, I have a very unpopular opinion of this, but I think it is something that, uh, will have to be addressed, and it's pertaining to these drains, and I know a lot of people are not going to like me for saying this, but honestly, there should be an ordinance that states that anyone that puts a drain in the creek or a bridge in the creek should have to have a permit, and that's where we're lacking is, uh, like I said, I know that's not going to be popular, but, uh, just as the situation that he's saying is that would help to, uh, stop this stuff from happening, and, and the court did go a long way, the prior court, whenever they voted to allow the road department to install drains, as long as a property owner purchased them, and the property owner talked to our flood plan coordinator and bought, and the property owner bought the size drain that, that he says will carry that water. That did go a long way to help, but still, if someone wants to buy and purchase their own drain, put it in themselves, they can do that without a permit, and, and there's no sizing, you know? There's, there's no way to.
Is the drain on Lizzie Fork too small, or was it put in wrong, or both?
Uh, so actually, in that line of drains that he's talking about, there's a row of drains through there. Honestly, I think out of that whole row, there's probably one drain that's sized correctly. The, the others are too small. And the reason I know that is I have taken in the July flood, uh, I had to take a drain out. Um, we have a, we have a drain that crosses our road right above there, uh, that I'm, I'm thinking is a seven-foot drain, and then below, everything is smaller below our seven-foot drain.
Did you get with Colonel Downey and get some, something drafted for us to look at? I mean, I was talking about permit, I'm not talking about something somebody would have to pay for, just.
No, it's not, it's easy to pay for, it's just, it gives them, someone to contact to tell them what size drain they should have, what size that they should buy that will carry the water. And honestly, it's only going to help them, because if you put in a three-foot where a five-foot should be, the first flood, it's going to wash that drain out, and if it doesn't wash it out, it's going to do you all kinds of damage, or do all kinds of damage to the county road.
Commissioner Atkins, what did you, what was your thoughts on it? Because I know.
Well, I went and looked at it and talked to the people, and like I said, the drain's supposed to be like a four-foot drain, but it was washed down when they put it back in, plus it was angled towards the other people's property. It wasn't even running parallel with the road. I mean, it's going to cause.
Damage.
Damage bad.
Do you think we need some kind of ordinance that would let the road commissioner?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean.
What about some kind of ordinance that would let him order somebody to have to remove it and make repairs? And we can't do it because of damage to private property, but if it's eating out one of our roads that we've, you know?
Yeah.
We've got to maintain.
Yeah, I think.
We should be able to take action on that before it gets to the point of costing the taxpayers money.
Right, because it's not going to show up until, actually, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage done. I mean, you wouldn't think that that would be correct, but you take one drain that's turned into the county road, it floods, it washes off, and it washes 400 foot of bank that's 16-foot tall. Now you're talking about drill steel, poly bags, and, you know, all of those that I just mentioned are over $100,000 fixes.
Y'all want to get Colonel Downey to draft something for us to look at on that?
Yeah.
Colonel, can you get with, uh? Hey, Colonel? You can get with Colonel.
I'll get with, I'll get with the Cor.
I need to get with you, Colonel, about drafting something, a proposed ordinance to let us make people fix drains that are undersized or put in incorrectly that jeopardize county roads.
You know, you're talking about, you, you can't keep a person from taking water off their land. You can't put something in that speeds up and dumps them at a quicker rate than is natural. And that does cause destruction.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
The longer the pipe, the faster it goes.
The more concrete the big. There is some law that says you can't speed up the flow of water some other ways.
All right.
I, I've got one more thing, Fabian. Have you had a chance to check on the bridge? I believe it's Jamesy Coleman Road right below Wolf Pit. I stopped and looked at it again. That bridge, it, it can be fixed a couple hours. One con, one of the eye beams has rusted, plumb out and gone. It's just dangling there. I mean, it, it's pretty bad shape. Uh, we could jack a bridge back up and put that piece of metal back under it, wouldn't even have to pour a pier. I mean, it'd be a very, very quick fix. I've been trying for about three years to get it done.
We have to talk about this one, uh, and, uh, we'll talk about it later, but there's, there's issues with this road. Okay? So we'll talk about it.
You want to talk about it now?
Well, we can, but okay, I mean, I don't care a bit, but that road is not listed as a county road.
Really? With all them houses, graveyard, all that over in there?
No, it is not listed as a county road. It is, it does not have a CR number.
That's the issue that we've had to deal with.
I checked the day that we talked about that road. I checked then, but that road does not have a CR number.
Well, that's another one that the county built, poured the concrete, done all of it.
And it is, and I know that's true, but.
Let's just say that I don't know if there was a lot of attention to details at times.
That, 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 that bridge, honestly, it does not, uh, that road is not into the county system.
All righty.
And I can print that out for you at the break, and, and, you know, to show you that, uh.
Probably needs to take it to these folks and show them.
And it wouldn't hurt to do that.
Cause, yeah, there's five families over.
I think there's four homes there.
Uh, the Whites, the Agginses, the Osbournes, the Coleman's, uh, Russell Roberts, his brother, uh, brother owns some property there.
I think structures, I thought there was four, there could be five now.
Oh, there's, there's more than that, actually. Jamesy Coleman and his family's got two, and then there's a trailer across Mill that Russell Roberts' brother own. Then there's a house on the hill that's, uh, Chad Osber and his daddy worked here for the county several years. Then Rowan Aggins in the brick house, and then Arville White and his wife below it.
Where's this at?
It's in the curve right below, uh, Wolf Pit.
Yeah, right above the Smurrier Church on the left, across the creek.
It's almost in that curve there, as you're heading out of, you know, back toward Marbone, back to the intersection.
It was what you put in the system is.
Yeah, I mean, um, and that's what I was going to talk to you about, honestly, if we, what we would need to do is after this ordinance is passed, is just to go about it, make sure everything's done correctly, because it will meet the criteria to be a county road, and that way the CR number's there and everything's good.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation on how to handle that.
Works for me, we'll, we'll get to work on it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the county commissioners recommended road maintenance?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins is her second. Second by, was it Commissioner, who made the second? Commissioner Scott?
Second, yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Get my mind going.
Any questions or discussion seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Mr. Little, thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna jump to treasurer's business, because Mr. Finn's gonna be up here for a while. You put all this on one meeting, you're gonna sit here the last, Greg. All right. Mr. Stacy, please proceed.
Authorize the following inter-fund transfers for February. Uh, transfer 502,312 dollars from the general fund to the jail fund.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Who was, who made the motion? Commissioner Scott? Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
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 Acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement for February 2023.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending February 20th, 2022, actually 2023. There's a typo here. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussion seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next time is authorize a standing, go ahead Frankie.
Authorize a standing order for ACH payments to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for non-federal cost shares for the Pacla Viza floodproofing project for feasibility study and the design of the co-run flood wall.
This, just the court knows, is drawing down state money that they gave us for that project, it's not our money. So is there a motion to authorize a standing order for ACH payments to the Army Corps for non-federal cost shares of the, uh, co-run floodproof, uh, project and the flood wall?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussion seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Authorize a standing order for checks to Consulting Service Incorporated and Summit Engineering for the engineering services on the Pike Senior Citizens Project.
Uh, this is CDBG block grant, uh, is, I'll make a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to Consulting Services and Summit Engineering for engineering services on the new senior citizens center. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussion seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funny, uh, pass-through money received for the U.S. Marshal Deputy salaries.
There a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the county sheriff for pass-through funds received for U.S. Marshals Deputy salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Blackburn is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussion seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Last thing I have would be to authorize checks for lodging registration expenses for anyone who needs to attend the K A E D Collaboration Conference, April 12th through the 13th at the Hight Regency Hotel in Louisville.
Is there a motion to authorize checks? What is K E D?
Uh, Kentucky Association of Economic Development. It's a grant class.
It's something, okay, that's up Sharon's alley there. All right. Is there a motion to authorize checks for lodging registration expenses for employees attending the K E E D Collaboration Conference, April 12th to 13th at the Hight Regency in Louisville?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, second. Uh, I'll make a second. Any questions or discussions seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. You have the business, sir.
That's all I have, Judge.
Thank you. All right. We need, uh, executive session tonight. You want to go now, Greg? You want to go now, or you want to wait?
What are you gonna do, Judge?
When we start, when we start this, people gonna be, y'all, y'all ready for a break? You want to take a break now and then come back and do this?
We're gonna be here while this, so.
All right. Uh, Colonel Downey, please instruct the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky Colonel Downey, please instruct the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky open meeting law thanks to entry into executive session by a fiscal court.
Is this under Q so we can avoid Greg? Actually, KRS sixty-one point eight one zero allows fiscal court to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed pending litigation and under paragraph F to discuss specific personnel actions.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioners, is it Scott or Blackburn?
Blackburn.
Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we'll be in recess for executive session. To adjourn from executive session. Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, excuse me, it's my motion to accept the resignation of Dylan Akers effective one nineteen twenty-three to acknowledge the retirement service of Delmar Chaney effective two twenty-eight twenty-three to acknowledge the retirement of Will Adams effective two twenty-eight twenty-three. Herr Jimmy Ratliff is a contract laborer for fifteen per hour effective three seven twenty-three with his pay to run concurrent with payroll and authorize a standing order for the treasurer to issue checks. Herr David Hayes is a loader at solid waste slot one at two H rated pay effective two twenty-three twenty-three. Herr Danny Coleman is a loader at solid waste slot one at two H rated pay effective three one twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Finn. It's that time of year that the commissioners have not had the privilege of going through all of these bids. So we save the best for last, most fun.
Judge, I do have several things this evening. Uh, first I have our, uh, our annual March bids. These are thirteen different bids that I have under contract uh, by April first and will run for one year. I also have another batch, I think it's twelve other annual bids that I do in June and have under contract uh, by July one. It would just be too many to try to do all at one time, to be honest. Uh, but we had a bid opening on February twenty-third on bids zero-two dash two-zero-two-three through bid number one-four dash two-zero-two-three. Uh, the first bid, uh, bid number zero-two dash two-zero-two-three is for building material. There were zero bids, uh, received. Uh, we do have several companies that we either have on state contract or co-op contract that we use, such as Lowe's is on state contract. We buy the majority of our building material through Lowe's anyway. Uh, bid number zero-three dash two-zero-two-three is for corrugated metal pipe and HDPE plastic pipe. Uh, two bids were received. One was from MGC Supply of Pikeville and the other one was from Drains Unlimited Incorporated of Prestonsburg. Uh, it'd be my recommendation that we award the bid to both of those vendors. Uh, bid number zero-four dash two-zero-two-three is for glass and glass-related products. One bid was received. It was from Customer Glass and Carp, and Carpet of Belfry. Uh, it's my recommendation that we award the bid to Customer Glass. Bid number zero-five dash two-zero-two-three is for limestone gravel delivered. One bid was, was, was received. It was from Mountain Aggregate of Lexington. Uh, my recommendation is we award the bid to Mountain Aggregate. Bid number zero-six dash two-zero-two-three is for limestone gravel picked up. Two bids were received. Uh, Mountain Aggregates of Lexington and MGC Supply of Pikeville. Uh, my recommendation is that we award the bid to both of those vendors. Bid number zero-seven dash two-zero-two-three is for plumbing and electrical supplies. Three bids were received. Justice Supply Company Incorporated of Shelby Anna, State Electric Supply of Pikeville, and Thompson's Hardware of Zebulon. My recommendation is that we award the bid to all three of those vendors. Uh, bid number zero-eight dash two-zero-two-three is for portable toilets. We do use a tremendous amount. Um, two bids were received. Um, Busy Bee Portable Toilets of Raccoon and Yount Septic of Prestonsburg. Um, the rate difference, the monthly rate, Busy Bee bid one hundred and fifteen dollars per month and a daily rate, event rate of ninety-five dollars. Uh, Yount's bid one hundred and fifty dollars monthly rate and one-twenty daily rate. It's, uh, we have the contract now with Busy Bee. Uh, it's gone up a little bit from last year. Last year, um, their monthly rate was ninety dollars and their daily rate was seventy-two fifty. That'd be my recommendation, we award the bid to Busy Bee. Uh, bid number zero-nine dash two-zero-two-three is for printing. Uh, two bids were received. C and R Office Supply of Pikeville and Chapman Printing of Huntington, West Virginia. My recommendation is that we award the bid to both of these vendors. Bid number one-zero dash two-zero-two-three is for sodium chloride or road salt. Three bids were received. Morton Salt of Chicago, Illinois, Compass Minerals of America in Overland Park, Kansas, and Cargill of North Oldstead, Ohio. Uh, the low bidder was Morton Salt with a bid delivered price of one hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents. This is the company that we have currently in this year. Uh, it's gone up a little bit. Uh, the contract we're under right now that runs out the end of this month. Uh, Morton sold it for us for a hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents and it's gone up to a hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents. But it'd be my recommendation, we award the bid to Morton Salt. Uh, bid number one-one dash two-zero-two-three is for tires and tubes. One bid was received. It was from Punk's Tire of Virgi. Uh, my recommendation, we award the bid to Punk's Tire. We also have other tire vendors that are on either state contract or co-op contract. Uh, bid number one-two dash two-zero-two-three is for cleaning supplies, chemicals, and related items. Two bids were received. B W B Enterprise of Mayone, West Virginia, and East Kentucky Chemical of Pikeville. My recommendation is we award the bid to both B W B Enterprise and East Kentucky Chemical. Um, bid number one-three dash two-zero-two-three is for bulk oil and related items. Uh, one bid was received. It was from Jones Petroleum Services. Um, primarily what we buy from them are our Dello fifteen W forty motor oil, our AW three, AW thirty-two hydraulic oil, and our DEF fluid. Um, the, uh, Dello fifteen W forty, uh, this year's contractual price will be fifteen forty-nine, fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents a gallon. The AW thirty-two will be eight dollars and forty-nine cents a gallon, and the DEF will be two dollars and ninety-nine cents a gallon. All other related items that we purchase from them will, will get a twenty percent discount from their list price. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Jones Petroleum. Uh, the last of the annual bids for March is our, is bid number one-four dash two-zero-two-three for vehicular parts. That's probably not a good title for that because it's not only vehicle parts, but it's parts for a lot of our equipment. Uh, there were nine bidders. Uh, Midstate Equipment of Buchanan, Virginia, Martins Peterbilt of Pikeville, Carquest of Pikeville, Leon's Auto Parts of Robinson Creek, Kentucky, uh, A and S Auto Parts of Elkhorn City, uh, GM, Walters GM Auto Mall of Pikeville, Tri-County Auto Parts and Truck Parts of Mouthcar, Tri-County Auto Parts and Truck Parts of Kemper, and S and S Hydraulics Incorporated of Elkhorn City. My recommendation is that we award the bid to all the above vendors. That's all, that, that's all my March bids.
Got any more besides these?
Not until June.
Any other bids here tonight that we have to do?
Oh yeah, I have a few more.
That's all I'm saying.
Oh, yes, sir.
Besides these?
Yes, sir.
Is there a, uh, motion to award the bids as stated by Mr. Finn?
I make a motion.
Can we read them all, each one, one by one?
Well, he already has and told us his recommendations, so I make a motion where you vote on his recommendation.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you sure you don't want me to go through them all, each one?
No. Hey.
It's been a long day.
It's skin thirty. We better hurry here.
You have done that in the past.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
I'm going to abstain for, uh, different reasons. Thank you. All right.
Uh, next judge, we have a project that's we've worked on for quite some time, uh, pretty intensive. Um, it has to do with FEMA. It is, I actually did a bid uh, in January. It's bid number zero-one dash two-zero-two-three for emergency residential bridge repair, for lack of a better name. FEMA, several months after the flood at the end of July, decided they were going to use some public assistance money to help some residents with some creek crossings. Uh, they identified twenty-seven locations in Pike County where the bridge or the culvert had washed out to individual residences. I bid all twenty-seven projects. After we got the bids back, we had to, we had to send somebody to do, to look individually at the places, and we sent Emergency Manager Director Nate Jackson and our floodplain coordinator Jimmy Kaiser. Some of the projects, after this several months, something had been done, a culvert had put in, a, you know, temporary bridge had put in, something had been done, so there wasn't anything else we could do. We also had to have a document that allowed us to go on their property if we put drains in, so we had to have a, a document signed by them. Um, out of the twenty-seven, the ones that still need it done, want it done, signed the document, we came up with nine. FEMA had wrote a scope of work, what needed to be done there and how much it should cost. Out of those nine, there were four that the contractors bid less than the amount that FEMA would give us to do the job, so those are ready to go. We haven't, the, the other five of those nine were ready to go, but the scope of work and the price that FEMA gave us is less than the low bid, so we have reapplied those additional five back to the state through FEMA to see if they will give us some more money to help finish this project for these other five people, but I didn't want to hold up these four that were ready to go. A lot of these people need this done as soon as possible, so I'd like to get an approval to, to go ahead and do, do these four and, um...
So the public understands this is not Pike County money, this is FEMA money?
Correct.
But they've asked us to help?
Yes, we've kind of facilitated the project. Um...
Okay, I, I got you.
These, these four projects that need done, the residents want them done, have signed the documents, and we have the funding in place um, to, you know, that the, that the contractor bid, uh, are project number one-one-three-four, the address is one-four-one-seven-seven Elkhorn Creek Road, Ash Camp. Project number one-one-three-six, the address is seven-five-eight-seven Elkhorn Creek Road, Ash Camp. Project number nine-seven-six-one-zero-three-five Ginsfort, Varney, Kentucky, and project number one-five-five-one, address six-eight-five-one Elkhorn Creek Road, Ash Camp.
All right, I got you. Is there a motion to award projects number one-one-three-four, one-one-three-six, nine-seven-six, and one-five-five-one uh, to bonded brothers for the total amount of sixty thousand dollars?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any questions, discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
They, they were the low bidder on all four of those projects. Uh, we have really taken a hard look here in the last month or so at our capital budget plan. Um, a lot of this stuff, there's a long lead time on it. There's not a lot of equipment sitting out there that we can just buy as we need. We've got to the point to where we're just going to have to place orders and wait for it to come in. You know, the sooner we do that, the sooner we're going to get it. If we keep putting it off because there's anything on the ground and then order it, it's going to be further around down the road trying to get it. Um, the first thing that I have that we're in a bad need of are, uh, two single axle dump trucks. We bought four about two years ago. Uh, they're Peterbilts with twelve-foot dump beds on them. These, um, two that I have here are specked out exactly like the four trucks we have. From what I understand, that they've done a real good job and they're, they're exactly what we need. Um, the cost of these tru, and also we're buying these on a Sourcewell contract, which is a co-op contract, which means that we don't have to put out a bid. Uh, the cost of these trucks, the cost of the truck is one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. That includes the installation of the bed uh, and all the accessories that we need on it, you know, put on the cabins, you know, put on the, put on the chassis. But the total cost would be one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars each. Be my recommendation to go ahead and, and place this order, uh, these two trucks. It will be probably the fourth quarter of this year before we see them.
This locks the price in?
It locks, it locks this price in, yes.
We don't have to pay for them until we get them.
We don't have to pay for them until we get them.
Is there a motion to purchase two of the, uh, Peterbilt six-wheel dump trucks under the Sourcewell, uh, discount as the co-op for, uh, this Peterbilt Motors Company, Sourcewell, distract that, Peterbilt Motors Company, Sourcewell contract zero-six-zero-nine-two-zero for the sum of one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars each?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. I'll make a second. Any other questions, discussions, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Something I didn't have on here is these, these trucks are being bought through, uh, Rush Equipment, who are the people that we bought the other four from. They have them specked out exactly like the other four that we bought.
Greg, just because we've awarded some of these earlier bids, you can go through state contractor Sourcewell or with the other co-ops, that's still an option too, correct?
I'm sorry.
Any of the bids that we order, that we awarded, that big group of bids, you can still use Sourcewells, state contract, or other sources?
Yes, yes. Uh, on some of these, just like, uh, on our, on our, on our annual bids you're talking about, just like on our building material, we didn't have any bidders. But we have Lowe's and some other places on state and co-op contracts that we can use. So yes, just like, and also like on our tires, we had one bidder, but we have, you know, other tire manufacturers and tire dealers that we have co-ops and state contracts with, so it doesn't limit us, limit us.
It works. All right, let's go on.
Um, something else that we, we've needed actually for a couple of years, uh, we've done a tremendous amount of, of black topping in the last couple of years. I think we estimated we did more in the last four years than had been done in the previous twelve, if I remember that correctly. Uh, but, but we had an undersized roller. Uh, we bought a new paver that pretty much paid for itself because we were able to do a lot of the paving instead of having, uh, Mountain Enterprise come in and, and do the paving. It, it pretty much paid for itself in a couple of years. Um, the roller we had, I think we've had some issues with it and it's tremendously undersized. Um, I think we leased a roller that was a little bit bigger um, for part of the hard-topping season last year, and it helped a little bit, but it still really wasn't as big as what is recommended. Uh, we've talked to, we've been in, um, conversation with, with, with Boyd Equipment. Um, with our, with our rep James Akers and also with their paving expert that is actually in Lexington that, that helped us with the paver recommending a size of roller. The size of roller they recommend for our use, and they understand that our hollow roads are up and downhill and curvy and, you know, so they're going to make sure they're not going to sell us something that's oversized, but, um, through all this negotiating, this is the size that will be best for us. Uh, it is a Caterpillar CP, CB-ten roller. Uh, we specked it out. It's got everything on it exactly like we want. Um, this is another one of those things, if we order it tomorrow, we're going to miss this whole paving season with it because it'll probably be fourth quarter before we get it, but we'll have it for the following year. If, if we wait till the end of this paving season, we'll mo, we'll lose another paving season. Uh, the cost of this machine is two hundred and nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents, and it is on our Sourcewell contract.
Was there any discount from Sourcewell?
Yes, that discount, uh, brings it down to two hundred and nine thousand. I'm not sure if I've got retail cost on this document or not.
I just talked to Mr. Little about it. I mean, we've been renting one. He says it's cheaper for us to buy one long-term and it were, Fabian, come up here and just say what you said, just so the public understands why we would buy this. Let me ask you a question, leading question. Will this help compact the blacktop when you lay it to where the roads will last longer?
That's the sole reason, yes, and that's the sole reason we do need it, to get, uh, the life out of the blacktop that we're laying. Uh, compaction is the key, and right now it's just the roller that we have. We just wasn't getting the compaction, uh, that we needed. And, uh, it does, you know, like I said, the more compaction we got, we, it, it, uh, pushes the life of our blacktop on out. I mean, it's going to last a lot longer. And that's what we're all about, is trying to, in the long run, we save money by, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but we actually save money in just, uh, maintenance of, on this road, barring a flood washing it out, but just normal, normal wear and tear of this will save us money on the road.
We won't get this till later this year.
We, we won't get it till fourth quarter.
So you're talking fourth quarter of the year. You're talking about fourth quarter of the calendar year or fourth quarter of the fiscal?
Fourth quarter this year, November, October, November, December, sometime.
Is there a motion to order this, uh, Caterpillar roller from Boyd Equipment on the Sourcewell contract for the sum of two hundred and nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Uh, any questions, discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, next item. Thank you, Mr.
You have more items for?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm...
I figured I might would just sit here. You may, you may want...
Yeah, just hang out with me, Fabian.
Uh, something else that we have on our capital budget we've been planning for, for a couple of years is a thirty-two yard packer for our solid waste department. We run some easy dumps. We run some fourteen-yard packers. We run I think two or three twenty-five yard packers, and we run two or three thirty-two yard packers. You know, if we can buy one a year, we would kind of replace them as they... You know, if we can buy one a year, we would kind of replace them as they wear out and only have to buy one a year instead of all of them wearing out at the same time and having to buy maybe three at the same time. So this is, this is the one for this fiscal year. But even more so, like some of these other ones, the cabin chassis won't be ready till sometime early fourth quarter. And then once we get the cabin chassis to Municipal Equipment to put the Cobra 32-yard packer, there's a five or six-month lead time to get the packer built to put on the chassis. So we're looking at 12 to 14 months anyway, getting this 32-yard packer. But we, we've planned for it. This is specked out, we, we've kind of talked about, you know, we bought a lot of Peterbilt trucks for the solid waste department. We bought some Peterbilt trucks for the road department. But we talked about putting, when we're putting a 32-yard packer on something, you're talking about a lot of weight, you're carrying a lot of trash, a lot of heavy trash. Our 32-yard packers are Mack trucks now, and they're more of a severe service truck like we've talked about. And I, I thought it was best, we all thought it may be best to try to put this on a Mack truck. It's a little more expensive than I thought it was, to be honest. But with this Mack truck and the, and the 32-yard Cobra body on it, total price is $313,878.92, and it would be about 12 to 14 months before we see it.
It's already in the budget though to buy one, right?
Well, to be honest, it is in the budget, but it's a little bit higher than we anticipated and there, we didn't put $313,000 in the budget for it.
It's substantially higher, but it is budgeted and we're gonna have to replace one of those big.
Oh yeah, yeah.
I don't think they're gonna get any cheaper, so.
And we, and we'll be locking it, this, this is through a state contract price, and we're locking in this price. If they take a raise in six months, or if they take a raise in 12 months, we won't be affected. We'll still be locked in at this price, even if it's 14 months before we get it.
All right.
Did you check the price of the Peterbilt truck compared to the Mack?
Pardon?
Did you check the price of the Peterbilt compared to the Mack?
I, I did not, but I, I would assume, and I probably shouldn't do that, I, I would assume that on the Peterbilt chassis, it would be a little bit less expensive.
But it ain't apples to apples, overall, you know, Mack's a little bit heavier duty. Well, Mack used to be the king of the truck.
Yep.
They are good trucks, they really are.
Is that right, are you getting better luck, I mean, as far as the heavy-duty truck, the Mack? How many, the '07 Mack you took off the road, how many miles it have on it?
But I don't remember how many miles was on it when we took it off the road, but it was '07 model. What we're running right now is 16 models, and really not having any issues much with them. I mean, any issue you have is due to the, the death stuff, you know, you have that for every truck these days.
Yep.
True. It regenerates, it regens.
I probably drove that '07, just took off.
Yeah.
It was one of the first ones I drove when I worked for Solid Waste, it was one of the older trucks.
But with these 32-yard trucks, I would recommend we get the Macs because they've been proven to be able to handle, handle that, that size of body.
They're probably at least a double frame truck, ain't they, Chuck?
I honestly don't know.
I would, I would think they would be.
The Peterbilt's.
I've got the full specs that I put in the bid package. Anybody, you know, would want to go through those specs and, and see if there's something that, but now, the Mack people actually engineered out this truck, or this 32-yard body. I think there was a change about what type of transmission that we were gonna run in the truck. I think we decided we'd rather have an Allison transmission if that would work. The engineering team at Worldwide, or at Mack, I guess, kind of went through and spec'd this truck out and set it up like exactly what we would need for this 32-yard packer. So it'll, it'll be right when it gets here.
There are motion to purchase this, is this truck on the lot right now, or has it gotta be built?
No, 12 to 14 months. That's why I was saying that cabin chassis will be fourth quarter. Probably five to six months, once they receive the chassis before the, the body will be finished on it and we get it. So it's 12 to 14 months.
Is this chassis coming from Worldwide?
Yes. It's, it's one of those things, you, you buy the body and they outfit the chassis under it, or you, or you buy the chassis and you outfit the body on it, the price is the same either way.
All right, is there a motion to go ahead and place the order for this 32-yard packer on the Mack chassis from Municipal Equipment in Louisville? Price of $313,878.92.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, second, I'll make the motion second. Any questions, discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Still have more, Judge.
All right, two more.
Something else that we have in our capital budget are two excavators. We bought a few for the road department, I can't remember, I think we bought three a couple of years ago for the road department, and we're, we're still in need of two more. This is a Caterpillar 313 excavator. Fabian Little, our road supervisor, has sat down with James Akers, our representative from Boyd Equipment, and inspected this machine out exactly like they want it. Fortunately for us, within their system, they have two of these. Now, there's some of the configuration that they have to change, the knuckle swivel and the thumb and bucket, that kind of thing. They're gonna put a different one on them. May take them 30, 45 days to get that finished, but we're not gonna have the lead time on them like we've seen on some of this other equipment that we've approved tonight. These are the excavators that our road supervisor wants, they're specked out like he needs. The cost is $235,561.17 each through Boyd Equipment.
Fabian, are these the same size as the other four we bought? What brand were the other four we bought? What, what brand was the other?
John Deere.
We're in the John Deere, 130s. I think we did say these are just a little more horsepower, correct, James? I think we're gaining about 20.
I think these are just a little stronger than the 130s.
Introduce yourself for the record, so everybody knows who we're talking to.
I'm sorry?
Introduce yourself for the purpose of the folks that might be watching this.
James Akers, Boyd Cat, Pike, Kentucky. But to answer Fabian's question, looking at the spec, first spec on these machines, they, they do have more horsepower than the ones Fabian currently has.
The 130s.
We've replaced, on the six-road lots, we've replaced four of them.
Yeah.
But you've got two that need to be replaced?
We do.
And these excavators will go with the two six-wheel trucks that we've placed the order for. What's the timeframe to get these excavators in?
Oh, the excavators are on the lot, at different locations, I don't have them at Pikeville. But they are on lot, we would need to do some changing on the pads, on the track pads. We could probably, if we'd done a loner bucket, I would let the county use the loner bucket while we get the attachments. Potentially, three to four weeks, I could have the machines on the job if we do loner buckets. Now, the, the specific attachments for the thumb and the swivel head, like you guys, well, similar, but it's a little different, are currently using, we're probably eight to nine weekly time on those.
Are you sure you can't do any better than this price?
Yes, sir, I've, I've worked on it for, for two days. Mr. Fannin, I will, I will say this, Mr. Fannin has been doing his job, you fired him for it, sir. I've got the, I've got the scars to show for it.
It's my turn now. We've got another court mate, James, in a week and a half. That's, I would ask that you go back, take another look and see if you can't, we're buying, we were talking about buying two of these and trailers to go with them.
But that's, that's where I've been working with my Cat Rip. I've been beating on them for, since yesterday.
Cat Rip needs to understand, these other people sell excavators.
Yes, sir, they do. I would, I would like for Mr. Fannin to tell you the state discount and additional discount that we were able to get for the county as well.
Well, something else that we.
Asking for the county discount now on top of the state discount.
Well, it's multi, multi-machine discount, I have to, I have to word it properly.
If you're asking $235,000 each, right, that's 400, I'm gonna math here.
471, 472.
235, I was thinking more like 220 each or something like that.
The, the machine list price is $263,812. The Kentucky master agreement is a 19% discount, which is $50,124.42. And our county multi-machine discount is $11,651.80. Now, also, we worked into this agreement a 48-month, 4,000-hour premium warranty. So our warranty would be a lot longer than normally the manufacturer's warranty would be.
I think there was a service agreement too, also, there was a service agreement.
There's a service agreement.
There is.
Just bought a roller, right?
Yes, sir.
Talking about buying two, two trailers and two excavators.
They got a free jacket.
We fill them up with diesel fuel when you bring them.
Yes, sir, we will fill them up with diesel fuel.
Well, that's pretty generous of you.
At the price of diesel for fuel, yes, sir.
Best thing about this too, Judge, if something does go wrong, I see him every day. I know where he works, I know where he hides, so.
Can't you, you have any influence, would we get more of a discount?
Oh, I've been working on him all week. Ask him, Fabian too.
I think James just came out of ICU from all the battering he's had last week or so. This also includes a, a service agreement of 48-month, 4,000-hour service agreement, which means they'll come and do all the service as required by the hours, all the oil changes and maintenance on the equipment for 48 months or 4,000 hours.
How about 60 months and 5,000 hours?
We can make that adjustment, sir, but it's gonna adjust that bottom line a little bit.
We'll pay you a motion to not buy them if you give me a little bit more service on them.
Let me, I'll take it back, but I, you know, at, at my standpoint with Cat, but I don't care a bit to take it back and let them tell me no, but, but that's what I've worked with the last two days. I've explained the situation, what you guys have now, what we're trying to do, and what you guys, business you've got guys have done, and a potential business in the future.
Tried to explain to him that, that we would be getting away from the John Deere for our road department if we bought those two, so that should be worth a little something else. I guess that's what the other $11,000 discount was.
All right, I've, I've give, I've give James a hard time.
I can take it, big boy, sir.
I get beat up every four years, so it's okay. What else, y'all wanna do, y'all wanna go ahead and place the order for these? We do need them. We've got two older excavators that are, that need to be replaced, we've got.
We do. They're on their last.
What lots will these go to?
One will go to two and then three, Marbon and Robson Creek.
I know I can get a motion out of one of them.
I guarantee it. I don't know, though, I'd like to keep one wheeled excavator too, I mean.
I'm sure one of these other guys will take, take, if you won't keep the wheel, then one of these other guys.
No, no, I said I'd like to have one too, because to use it some places. I, I still, he ain't want me over with the off-track excavator. You can't, there's advantages and disadvantages. When you can't get a truck in the head of a holler and turn, and you gotta tram that thing three miles to the head of that holler, what are you doing to the undercarriage, your tracks, beating that thing to death, trimming it up to work, and then trimming it back out, six mile on blacktop, bouncing up and down? You can't get that track excavator up there, you ain't gonna get that one with wheels on. But what I'm saying, I ain't, yeah, you can get the excavator up there, but you can't get the truck to haul it to the head of that holler. You're gonna have to tram it on the blacktop. You can run that excavator, you can pull that truck up there.
Find it out, I'll sit over here and watch.
Huh? You watch?
Yeah, I'm just watching you all. What do y'all wanna do?
I want a jacket.
You want a jacket out of it?
Yeah.
You don't miss a big over now.
I tell you what, we, we've already aggravated enough, I make a motion to buy them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hard, hard bargain, so we have a motion second to purchase two of these excavators on state contract price with additional county multi-equipment discount sum of $235,561.17 now. All the other stuff we bought, we ain't gotta pay for right now. Frankie, have we got the money to go ahead and cover this? Not gonna put the county any kind of? Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be bouncing checks like a rubber ball here with these excavators.
You're gonna get authorization for a check for these two?
And I, and is there also a modified motion to issue, for the treasurer to issue a check for payment of the same?
Motion.
A motion, hell, let's do one at a time.
He made a motion, I'll say.
Hell, we got pending motion on buying them first.
Oh, okay.
Y'all withdraw those motions, let me state the motion.
Withdraw.
Let me state the motion, we all, y'all withdraw those? Is there a motion to purchase two Caterpillar excavators as stated with sum of $235,561.17 at state contract price with an additional county multi-equipment discount and authorization for the treasurer to issue check for payment of the same?
And I make a motion now.
You can make a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Can I second it now?
You can second it now, second now by Commissioner Atkins. Even though we didn't get a free jacket out of this.
Should get some hats anyway.
They've got nothing I stripped of. I'm, I'm gonna buy him a boggan when I'm up there in the morning, bring it to.
All right, we have a motion second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes, it's my understanding that y'all gonna throw some trailers in for free with these?
That's me again. James, I apologize, this is a tough bunch.
I'm tough on him too. James, that's why the county's in better financial shape, is we scrutinize every dime we spend, and we, we appreciate you working with us, all, all joking aside. All right, we've got one more item to deal with, is that correct, Greg?
Yes, sir. This is for a Trail King 20-ton tilt trailer, we need two of them. These trailers will be used to move around the two excavators that we just purchased.
Be a lot easier than tramping them all over, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. The lead, the lead time is a little bit longer than it will be for the excavators.
Hopefully Fabian can work something out.
As needed.
These also on state contract price?
They are on Sourcewell contract.
Sourcewell contract.
Yes. We bought, we bought, we bought four other excavators. I think we bought three Econo line.
We did.
Trailers. The Trail King trailers are a little bit more expensive trailer. Just the way it worked out when we bought that fourth one, they had a Trail King there that hadn't taken a price increase and the Conals had, and we could buy the Trail King for the same price as the Econo line trailer. So we bought the Trail King. In the meantime, after we got this Trail King trailer, Fabian realized how much better of a trailer it is than the Econo line.
It's worth the money, the way it trailer, I, I don't mean to speak out of turn, I'm sorry, but the way that that trailer, the way it trailers that excavator and the ease of loading on it is well worth the increase from one trailer to the next. That Trail King is, is a lot better trailer.
Well, these, these are the Trail King, they are, after the Sourcewell discount, they are $42,450 each, and we will be purchasing two of them for the two excavators.
When will we get them in?
Pardon?
When will these things come in?
They're gonna be probably into third quarter or into the start of the fourth quarter.
So we don't have to pay for them now, right?
Don't have to pay for them now, no, sir.
There are motion to purchase two Trail King trailers from Boyd Equipment for the sum of $42,450, and we do not need to make payment at the present time. Motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, I'll make a second. Any questions, discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. All right, we've been here a while, is there anybody have anything they want to say to the court tonight?
Judge, that is all I have.
I knew it was.
Thank you. Thank you.
Short-circuiting this. Is everybody ready to go home?
Yes.
Are there any objections to going home?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna ask, uh, you're gonna be the popular guy tonight.
Who's got the tomatoes?
Next Thursday starts our waste tire collection event. I just want the folks out in the county to realize that this is a good opportunity to get rid of any old loose tires they have around.
What are the terms of that and where do they take them?
They bring them up to 174 Mountain Road, which is up there where the maintenance garage and the solid waste lot is.
They go up to the maintenance?
Yes, 174 Mountain Road.
Any kind of tire?
Uh, no, they will not accept foam field tires, calcium field tires, off-road construction tires, rubber tracks, solid tires with, solid tires or any tires with beads greater than inch and three quarters.
Is there the terms of this, is it posted on the Solid Waste Facebook page?
It is.
Thank you, so.
But I just, I hope everybody gets out and takes advantage of this cause we got such a tire problem in the county, tires everywhere. It's just a good opportunity to get rid of some tires.
My buddy Pete Runyon, who is active with friends in the tug fort, they have pulled over 5,000 tires out of the tug fort over in Williamson, South Williamson. Amazing. And it's a problem in the, in the big sanding about Ever Creek around here. I will share that on Facebook and we would encourage everybody to participate in that. Alright, any other business to come before the court tonight? That being said, Nate, would you come up and close us out with a benediction? And then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall I bow for prayer? Dear heavenly Father Lord, Lord, we come to you, Lord, just thanking you so much for this court, Lord, for them doing the business of Pike County, dear Lord. And Lord, we just ask that you watch over each and every one of us, dear Lord, and give us traveling mercies. And Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless each and every one of us in our daily walks of life. We just ask these things in your precious and holy name, and amen.
Amen. I move that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.